Okay, we'll call the Conservation Commission for orders by the clock on February 11. Uh, if you can take attendance, please.
Commissioner Collins?
Here.
Commissioner Martinez? Uh, present. Commissioner Almenas? Commissioner Miller?
Here.
Commissioner Jones? Commissioner Ryan, here. And Commissioner Von Jordan, here.
Having all present, um, with the indulgence of everybody in the room, we're going to take item uh, three certificate of compliance on order because this has been waiting for a while. So uh, certificate of compliance or property known as 149 Winterset.
Yeah, and Thomas, you're the, you're the former property owner, is that correct?
Uh, no longer, but I was at the time.
Okay, and that was just the sale of the property, right?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I'm not sure if I can hear you properly, but um, did he say 149 Winterset?
That's what the, that's what it says here.
Yeah, okay. I just want to make sure I've got that.
Yeah. So I've got information, I guess I can show everybody if you, if you want to see the property. This is the property here, everybody. Everybody see, everybody online, see my screen?
Uh, I do not see it, but I know what the property looks like.
All right.
Oh, here, here it comes, it's coming now.
Okay, so that's the property in question. And I know there's wetlands to the north section of the parcel. I do have um, information here stamped from an engineer when the originally property was set stating that the work in the plan were consistent with the order conditions actually have a proof of that to show everybody right here, proof of compliance. Right here.
Excellent. Alright, so we have the engineer's letter.
Yeah.
Everything was done according to the original order. And that if there's any, unless there's any questions, then a motion to issue a full certificate of compliance is in order.
Oh, amazing. And I second.
Okay, motion been made, seconding. We'll have to call because we have something tomorrow.
All right, Commissioner Collins?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Ryan?
Yes.
And Commissioner Von Jordan?
Yes.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
All right, you all set, Thomas?
Okay.
Before you go, do you want this sent to you and Carolyn or just you?
Yeah, why don't you send it to both of us? Um, I don't really know Carolyn, she's the um, the buyer's agent, so I'd just like to have on record when I go to my um, lawyer to show him what happened here.
Okay, you got it. I'll, I'll get that out to you as soon as possible.
Okay, sounds great. Thank you everyone. Yep.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, bye bye.
We'll go back to the regular order, which is request for determination of applicability for work relating to the proposed improvement of hiking trail located on properties known as 7 Norica Street and Springfield Conservation Commission lands west side of Liberty.
Yeah. Adam, you want to call the press?
Uh, thank you for allowing me to come before the Conservation Commission. I'm Todd Crossit from 7 Norica Street in Springfield, uh, which is property owned with my partner Ian Richmond. And I'm here to request your support for improvements to what we call the Doyle Avenue Trail. Uh, specifically, I'm requesting a determination for applicability and a letter of support uh, for a community preservation grant. The trail system is part of the Abbey Brook uh, watershed, so I want to apologize that, I don't have science.
No, it's fine. I, we all got the plans at home.
Okay, so I'll go over them, then, then briefly and uh, uh, you can ask questions. On the uh, um, so so it's part of the Abbey Brook watershed, it's located west of Liberty Street, there's approximately 55 acres of wooded wetlands owned by the city, uh, Springfield Conservation Commission with Chicopee and tied owners, including Anne, Anne and May and Academy Hill School. So, uh, briefly, who's involved? Anne and I. Uh, we bought Norica Street Community Farm four years ago, and as farmers moving towards that one uh, of dwelling, most of our attention is paid towards our farm um, and repairing land damaged by mismanaged and thwarted development. Uh, we've also managed the woods. Uh, we have acres of wooded land, and that's part of the trail system that we're talking about today. It's beautiful, and we want to share it with people. Uh, Terramore LLC is owned by Walker Corby. Walker is here tonight. Uh, we hired Walker after we realized, uh, we needed a professional trail builder, uh, to make recommendations and that the CPA was more likely to fund a project that had the design already in place. Uh, Walker's been in business for over 10 years, he's done numerous projects like this one. Uh, and before that, he was uh, the manager of the trustees of the reservation. Uh, and we chose Walker because he specializes in building low-impact eco-integrated walking uh, walkways and trails. And then Adam, Adam's been absolutely fantastic, walking me through the process, um, lots of advice, uh, he's walked the property a couple of times with us, just been great. So, uh, brief overview, um, there's about a mile of trails in the system, and there's a main loop that's about seven tenths of a mile, it begins at the end of Doyle Street. And uh, the trail, uh, the trail goes um, through our property. And what we're trying to do is improve these trails. It's an informal trail system created by the neighbors around the wetlands. It was not created with wetland management in mind, and the trail needs to be improved at degrading. And what we're attempting to do is create a design that is less impactful on a land that ensures that the neighborhood can enjoy the wetlands for years to come. So there's three main elements, um, that are fairly significant, meaning we're going to move the way. Uh, and so there are the improvement of the drainage near the trailhead on Doyle Avenue. There's a, a boardwalk over the, the drainage by Abbey Brook, and there's two rerouting of spurs that come off of this trail. Um, and I'll take those one at a time, and the first one is the new drainage, which is, which is um, if you're looking at your map, right at the, the trailhead, five and six. And what happens there is there's a, a storm drainage and the, the water's coming over the trail, and then it's uh, goes into a pond and then cuts back across the trail. And um, that area um, needs to have the, the drainage next to the trail lowered so that the water goes off the trail into the pond, and then it's um, concentrated across the, the trail at the bottom there at number, number six. And um, so um, that'll be uh, that can be done rather quickly, uh, and it's uh, some light excavation, uh, to manage that stormwater runoff and to concentrate the flow across the path and to instill a short boardwalk across that. So that's down by uh, number five there. Thank you. Appreciate that. So um, and then um, riprap will be installed to, to deflect the velocity of the water and have it uh, not erode as it dumps into the, the main tributary there. The main, major.
Where is, where is?
So uh, six. Oh no, the main tributary is, is uh, you see the bridge, number nine? That's the main tributary. Um, the major component is down by number four, and that's the boardwalk. And this project would replace a 50 feet uh, crossing that spans the mouth of the drainage as it deposits into Abbey Brook. Abbey Brook is where that A is on boardwalk. The current crossing consists of deteriorating fencing structures that have been laid across the ground. Um, and this area, it's, it's quite wet, it's, it's mostly wet, that, you know, if you walked on it three, uh, three seasons of the year, your boat would be up to your ankle in water. Um, and then uh, my um, intrepid and uh, extremely creative neighbors many years ago put a picnic table across the um, across the creek. Uh, and, and that is the bridge. So a new crossing uh, would be put in, uh, to place with helical piers, and the crossing would be 48 inches wide with pressure-treated wood and gaps between the boards to allow sunlight in, and it would get the uh, boardwalk off the ground, so um, get a little more growth. Then also, on this um, there's, on the southern side of the crossing, uh, on this map, you can see number three there. That's, that's the current uh, trail. It's got a bunch of Xs in it. And that's running up a uh, whatever we call it, a dry creek or a runoff. Um, and it's, it's beginning to erode, so you're going to be in that classic divot. Uh, that's just going to get worse and worse.
Just put your cursor on number three.
And um, and so the solution that Walker has come up with is, is to rewrap the trail there. And so that the green line that you see just past the board there on a larger map, that goes up, and that's, that goes to a lookout, goes up to a lookout, that overlooks Abbey Brook. That's, that's uh, quite nice. Uh, and so that that trail will be less steep, a little bit longer. And to do that requires removing some uh, uh, organic material, light vegetation, no major trees coming down, nothing like that. And then uh, the other rerouting is on our property. And um, that's on a spur to the other side, if you can pull the map up, up by eight and 10. It might not go that far.
What are you going to use for the signature? Of that rerouting?
It's just dirt.
Just the regular, okay. You're not creating anything?
No, sir. And so the other rerouting, same sort of thing, but it's, it's on the um, it's on the private property, it's the green line there. Presently, the trail comes up, goes across a, a small creek, and then it goes up a pretty steep grade. And that steep grade goes right into our backyard, which um, for, for for us, it's no problem. We love people, we love them using the trail, but it's a little awkward when the the stray lost jogger comes up and, and there we are. So we're, we're um, going to reroute that trail there, a little less steep slope and around the back of the farm. So people, if they happen to end up back there, can escape without having to interact with people on the farm uh, out to Norica Street.
Number 10 down there?
Yeah.
All right, so, and that's the same. It's not going to require anything more than just uh, moving some of the organic materials and light removal of vegetation, of branches. So those are the, those are the three main projects uh, that we're requesting for determination of applicability. Uh, any questions on those? Technical questions? Walker's here to answer those.
When you divert and make the new, are you going to put like an arrow or any kind of, yeah, you know, put some signage?
Yeah.
Because people are used to, I remember that one, it comes right up to the back of the property.
Yeah.
And it's pretty steep, but it's
So there are.
It's been used for a long time.
All the red dots there are signage.
Okay, excellent.
Okay.
And um,
And how did you, how are, how are you going to do the signs on that?
Well, after talking to you, uh, signage, I think that the entrance sign should be a little bit more formidable and should have a map on it. And not Delta Hills, if you're familiar with that, that neighborhood walking trail, that's a pretty big sign. I don't think it needs to be that big.
Well, that was, the history of that site is there used to be a lot of ATV truck up there.
Uh.
And that was to try to deter that and get it back to foot traffic.
Um, and so, um, and then, then after talking with you, Adam, I think having the signage on trees makes the most sense. And not, not digging the dirt up. Um, but signage is important uh, uh, to make sure that people can, you know, know where to go.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I'd like to hear about the uh, the rerouting of both spurs. Like the one in the storm drain, the flow is the first one that you spoke about there. I'm guessing it's up there in your number two or three, four? Definitely, yeah. Maybe you're going to go anywhere. Your, 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 your material.
Oh, no, no, that's bringing, bringing, oh. We're bringing up the um, trails. Yeah, we're, we're, um, yeah, which is, which is stones. Um, and, and some uh, light excavation along the side of that. Um, Walker, do you want to talk about that?
And lowering it.
Yeah, lowering it.
Yeah, I would, I would actually refer more to it as grading than excavation, um, because nothing will be removed from that area. It's more uh, shaping it so that the um, the, the bottom of, you know, the invert of that, that drainage uh, is just, is lower than it is to the top of the trail than it is now. Um, that way, the water just will always stay off of the trail. So it's a, um, you know, a gentle grading directing it away from the places where people are walking. So just in, increasing the depth right there. Um, yeah, I mean, I think that's, there's any questions?
I wanted to hear about the storm drain a little more.
That's the storm drain.
All right, I'm missing the first one.
So there's, there's two, when you talk about five and six, there's two projects that are related there. One is getting the uh, water to drain parallel and away from the, the trail. And then five is where it crosses over. So, right now, it kind of spills across willy-nilly, kind of a wide section, and it's um, it's not a great uh, hiking experience. Um, and there's water there pretty much all the time, well, there was water there all the time. So to concentrate that and have it come up, come across in a narrower path and then put a a bog bridge over, over the top of it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Quick question, um, with the, with the thoughts of foot traffic and the wooden bridge. Um, I believe you said the minimum is 48 inches, and with most people walking side by side, uh, would you be open to making it maybe 60 inches wide uh, for more foot track, uh, traffic and comfortable walking through? Comfortability.
Um, 48 inches is pretty wide. The trail is between, the, the dirt trail is between two feet and three feet now. And, and, and four feet is, is a pretty generous and fairly standard uh, boardwalk. Uh, Walker, what do you think?
Yeah, I, I, well, I think, I mean, I, I agree, obviously, that making it larger like that would allow two people passing side by side. Um, I think just looking at the context it's in of the, the rest of the trails, as you just said, most of the trail widths are, are no more than two foot wide anyway. Um, the section that's along, that, that section that is uh, on that south side, that it is on the city's property, is wider. So I mean, it is, you know, it, it, it doesn't get used often enough to be compacted and clear for four foot wide, but it's, there's enough flat space that with improvements in, 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 in traffic, it would appear to be three or four foot wide, um, open. Um, so I mean, sure, yeah, the, the, the only reason to not do that is just cost. Um, you know, for that small section right there, like that would, that doesn't seem unreasonable at all. Um, for the larger boardwalk, the, that will, would, you know, add cost to making, add a more significant cost.
And you've got two feet coming in and two feet going out, but four feet seems to be like that would be sufficient for, you know, somebody going each direction without having problems.
Yeah.
And there's, the, another factor of it is just the, kind of the user aesthetic experience of it. You know, people, people um, tend to feel more, um, they, they like to see less infrastructure, you know, or the infrastructure, people like to see the infrastructure more blended into the landscape. Um, and sometimes making it larger can, uh, can just make it more apparent, just from an aesthetic point, but.
The pictures that you showed us, Walker, that was a four-foot bridge, right?
Uh, yes, yep, yep, the entire width, I think, was five foot, and then the walkable, you know, with the rails and everything like that, was, was closer to four foot, I believe, the ones that I sent you.
Is that typically, is that what you're proposing here?
Um, we're, we're talking about which, for number five or for the, oh, for number four? Number four, I, I was thinking more of a, um, let's see, we usually do like a, it's like a 48 inch outside to outside, and then there's little, little short um, edges to it, you know, it's uh, two by fours up on blocks that take up, you know, kind of four inches on either side, so it creates about 40 inches of clear space to, to walk on. Um, and yeah, I, I, that's the size that I did out in uh, Schutze Berry for a, you know, 850-foot boardwalk through the bog there. And uh, and that's, and, and usually if it's going to be long, we would create some sort of bump out in the middle for, for people, for passing, if, if it's long, but something like that, this is pretty short, so.
Oh, around the dimensions, where there's the uh, the gaps or the spacing between your planks on, on, on the boardwalk?
Um, assuming that we don't, that there's no way that we would ever make this wheelchair accessible, um, you know, we can, you can put half-inch gaps in there. If, if it was going to be something that'd be wheelchair accessible, we would have it um, you know, a quarter inch, maybe five-eighths inch, but in these, in this instance, half-inch, three-quarter, yeah, yeah, half inches probably.
I'm thinking just the, uh, a little wider first, light to, uh, for the vegetation.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, but, but if we, if it was going to be wheelchair accessible, having wider gaps can become problematic. Um, so because it's not wheelchair accessible, we can have the larger gaps, you know, half-inch, three-quarter inch.
Are you proposing wheelchair accessible?
No, we had a lot of discussions about this, and then with state. And it's, one is the grade is difficult and expensive. The other is parking, we don't want to add any parking. It's just a neighborhood trail, it's very much like Delta Hills.
Well, because we're environmental enthusiasts, um, I'm, I'm interested in a little bit of uh, background, what, what are you looking for, for, who looks for funding?
So we're, uh, I can talk about that um, next, if you'd like to talk about the CPA. So we're going to apply for the CPA, and that will, um, I need to have that in by the 21st personally. And um, uh, we'd like to keep this under $50,000, uh, project. And we're there now, but however, the state asked us to put helical piers in, and so that's going to bump up the cost a little bit. And um, I did get uh, Dave uh, from ReGreen Springfield to commit to taking up the knotweed as part of his CPA project next year, so that, that it's off the costs. So this, we're going to keep it under $50,000 CPA grant.
Do you got a spray that? Is he going to spray?
No, no, we're going to inject it.
Dave would be coming in, take it. Inject.
We're going to inject, yeah, you're going to inject the stamps of.
Yeah. Well, it's, it's location is not, you're trying to keep it a neighborhood trail, and we've looked at the uh, the accessibility. As this project becomes known in Springfield, you may have visitors. So how are the neighbors feel about it?
Well, we'll have to ask them, someone's ever here. I'm, I'm doubtful that we're going to get a whole lot of uh, more track, traffic. You're not going to attract hikers because it's, it's not long enough. Um, and and so it's, it's not a, uh, a place that people will necessarily drive to, to hike it. It's going to be like Delta Hills. Um, I think you're going to get a bird enthusiast occasionally. Uh, you're going to get the, the, the jogger, which we see sometimes, but I think it's mostly going to be neighborhood dog walkers and uh, folks that come to the farm, our farm, use it. I mean, I hope it would get more foot traffic. Um, the schools use it, I didn't talk about that, Academy Hill, which is right there, and then um, Valley West up to the north, so the kids come down and play in the woods. Uh, but they're not using the trail that much, they're staying pretty close up on building boards, throwing snowballs at each. Yeah, and it, it doesn't go anywhere, you know, I mean, it's a loose, I mean, uh, so it's, you can't use it to get to the, the plaza. You know, so. Uh, okay, some other things that I wanted to mention, um, briefly.
CPA doesn't have any requirement that would make you, make your P and C accessible, does it?
No, it doesn't. No, it doesn't. And I think it's, I mean, we're two blocks from the handicap accessible trail, which is the end one. Maintenance, maintenance, the, uh, uh, it's maintained by the neighbors. I mean, it's created by the neighbors and maintained by the neighbors. We had a spring cleanout. I see Hannah's here, she has a spring cleanout and, uh, pulling out tires and garbage and such. Ed's here and he often, uh, maintains the trail and I maintain the trail. We'll, we'll take out organic matter. I'm the one that, presently, I'm the one that cuts the occasional fallen tree off and move it. When we have time, we cut the bitter street. So. That won't change. Uh, signage, we discussed liability. This is one of the issues that comes up. For people, um. People often question public-private trails. And, uh, however. Uh, this public-private trail arrangement has a long history in New England and in nineteen seventy two. Massachusetts passed a, a, a law, the Massachusetts recreational use statute that, um. Landowners are not liable for personal injuries sustained on trails, doesn't mean for free and open public recreation use. They could sue me if I dug a hole and they fell into it, you know, trapped them somehow, but it would have to be negligent, wanton. Beh- behavior. And then, uh, community communication. Uh, I did all the basic stuff that we're supposed to do here. Uh, interested neighbors. Hundred foot buffer. I also hand-delivered, uh, drafts of the plan to the two schools. Uh, I also let people know who are, are interested and or have land, large tracts of land abutting. Some of them are here. We also let, uh, folks that can go to our farm know about this and some of those folks are here, so. And they might have things to say or share as well. Yeah, that was a good segue, is. Do we have members of the public who might go offer any input? Yes, sir. Did you speak to what? Any other neighbor that might participate?
Yeah, I live off of New, Newbury.
Go just state your name.
George Plas, uh, six eighty seven, Newbury. The farm goes the whole length of Doyle Street. It's on the other side of Whitmore. It's between Thornville and Whitmore. And. That's my wife's family and then me and my wife bought three lots over there on Thornville Street. That a buck tobacco. George's property. And it's like a family area where it all, a bunch of watershed. On the Newbury end and the end of Doyle, the end where there's gonna be a sign. Sounds like a great idea. It's quiet back there. It is a neighborhood. Area. I've been here for forty five years on Thornville and. I think what he has planned will help the water flow better. Because at times. You know, it is eroding one of the hills he's discussing, trying to fix it down there on six, five and six. And, uh, I think it's a great idea for a neighborhood to have a trail that is somewhat more maintained. Todd's put a lot of effort into it. And I go to his farm in, uh, around the corner, community farm. And he's brought a lot to the community. So I'm here supporting. We lived there for a long time. My wife's lived on Hungry Hill all our life. And, uh. Our whole family's on Hungry Hill, the Kenny family. And. It's a great neighborhood. It's all, it's all connected. Doyle, Whitmore, Thornville, down Bottom Hill, Hartley. There's, um, at the end of Hartley, there's an easement that goes into the woods, but it's all wetting there, so. They can't really do anything with it really, other than have it as a watershed, because it flew behind Hogan's Ice back in the day. And comes down behind the plaza, it comes all the way through. Now you know the big problem they had over there behind Van Sickle. Well, that's all the same watershed that comes through the woods, all down through there. Lot of wildlife in there, beautiful turkeys, there's deer coming into the farm in the back where we are. It's beautiful back there. I mean, it would be a nice nature trail. I think he's spot on. And everything's there and he's not asking for much, really, when you think about it. And, uh, a few bridges, little. A little, um, cleanup and, uh. I think it would be a very interesting here. And it's already conservation land, watershed. And it all comes down and they have the piping system right down at the bottom of, of Liberty there behind. Lower, below the plaza where they got the pumping station. And. The water goes through here all winter long in the rainy seasons and stuff, so that has to be maintained as a watershed. You know, it's really wet down in there. So. The part at the end of, end of, uh, Hartley. Is more toward the pumping station where it's more wet in that end of it, where, where they're talking to trails and everything. It's a nicer area to walk. It makes sense coming in from Doyle. You come in that way and it opens up and then it shoots out straight, straight into the. You know, they don't, no one goes over there in the Newbury, the, um. Uh, Hartley side, cause it's too foliage, it's so thick in there, you can't see in the summertime. More than thirty feet. It's really overgrown. But the section he's talking about where all the trails are and stuff, it's, it's more open than any other. It, it makes sense, it makes sense.
Thank you.
You know, very, very little claim.
Any other neighbors wanna come? And nobody else has any objection. Obviously, you're all here in support.
My name's Kathy Mossy. I'm head of an Hungry Hill Neighborhood Council. Um, came along with the board member just to get another overview. Todd has come to the neighborhood council, put neighborhood council board, presented the plan. Um, the only couple of questions I had was, do we have access from Doyle Avenue? At the foot of, at the end of it, is there another access point at some point time? Or is it just Doyle?
On the Springfield side, it's Doyle. And as Steve said, there, the other streets really don't have access. Uh, back into that area. I haven't seen the trails. There's our property that's access. And then the other access point is the one that maybe Hannah. Accesses, which is through Chickapee and that's from the back of the cemetery. You wanna talk about that, Hannah?
I'd be happy to. I just haven't wanted to interrupt from up here. Uh, my name is Hannah Bliss. I live on Moore Street, technically Chickapee, but. I'm Todd's neighbor. I, I, I hike in these woods at least once a week when my knee is not broken, which is why I'm not with you in person today. Um, and as a person who uses the woods and loves them, um, they bring so much to, to my life and my dog's life and my neighbors really enjoy them as well. My. Nephews have had a lot of great memories in those woods. I'm always thinking when I'm hiking on those trails. Especially the parts that are degrading, thinking, oh, I, I love being in these woods. I love being here and utilizing this trail and I'm not sure of me being here is good. For the space because the trails aren't created intentionally. And so I'd be so thrilled and it would feel so much better. About using the trails if, um, if, if we were able to bring some of these, um. Changes to life. It would also be a lot safer, I think, for folks. Um, some of the, like Todd mentioned, the, um. Some of the wood that is kind of used as bridges now is, is degrading a lot and is super slippery too. You know, it's old picnic tables. So, it, I think it would be a lot more accessible to a lot more families if there was a little bit more signage in the area. And if, if the trails were, were, were cleared up a little bit. I also don't think we have to worry about a ton of foot traffic, given that Van Horn is so close. I think that was mentioned previously and also Zot Park is so close on both sides. And those both have great parking lots and they're, they're accessible, um, in many ways, so. I don't see any downsides to this and I'm just super thrilled and here to support however I can.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. A few years back, we had a lot of problems with their blocks one, in fact, it was a big issue. We advertised it. That means people that are not for the community, living below that, for a few years now. If we advertise it too much, I feel like you've been bringing the bad, some bad attention. We had a few years back, there were a lot of issues back then, those are big issue. Now we have that down, so far so good, but after we advertise it, we might also bring unwanted attention.
I don't think they're looking to advertise. I didn't hear any of those things. Uh, the signage going in there where the entrance is. Which, I don't know how big a sign you're planning. But you might wanna indicate it's walking trail only, no motorized vehicles. Yeah, I think that's.
The trails aren't, aren't butchered by mice anyway. What you do, you really can't, you can't get that.
Uh, and I, I think the infrastructure that we put in, I mean, some bikers are gonna do anything, right? They're gonna get around anything. So, uh, but I think the infrastructure that we, we built, we make it specifically for walkers. That. I mean, you can discourage bikers as much as you can, but some of the obstacles you put. For bikers, they see as a challenge.
Yeah, the, the dogs of some of these people chase spikes. I have a question from a resident. What, what do you think would happen to the property should you, should you sell it in the future? So, have you, have you thought much about your own property? Have you thought much about that?
Yeah, we.
Should you sell your property in the future? What would happen to all of it?
Well, uh, well, there's two things that we could talk about. One would be. If we sold our property, it would just be that side of the trail, right?
Yeah.
And if somebody else said, hey, we don't want it. But our, our goal is, uh, to preserve. That property as a farm and to preserve the, the woods. We have also been approached. By smart people that said, well, why don't you donate that land to the city? And get a tax break. And my response is, well, why doesn't the city allow me to buy that property so I can preserve it? Because. Given, given the recent history of development, I don't know who to trust more, you know? Conservation restriction. Right, and I think that's, that would be the way we would go.
Yeah.
Is to put, you know, continue to own it, manage it, put a conservation. And you get similar breaks from the state with a conservation restriction as well. Yeah, we. We have some issues that in order to stay agriculture, we need five acres. And that five acres goes into the woods and so we'll work that out. Uh, we plan to be around for another year or two, so. They have, they have the farms in Agla not put in conservation while they're still farming. Oh, no, we'll do it within the, we'll figure this out within the next year or two. Yes, sir.
I, I think the smaller bridges will keep the quads out of there. You know, they have trouble trying to get across the bridges, so you know what I mean? The wider they are, the more. You're gonna probably get quads trying to go through here. Keep a smaller bridge. Will keep, keep the bigger, bigger bikes out of there, quads, sooner or later.
Hopefully, the olive bikes will stay.
Yes.
I don't see anybody, the, the, the most advertising this is probably gonna get is when you go to the hearing to get funds. Other than that, you're not looking to put anything in the paper. You're not, you're not looking to do, you know, so.
And I can see a bicycle, a four foot bridge, a bicycle can go through nights, you know, not, you know, quiet. It's not a motorized vehicle.
You can hear the concerns of the neighbor. They, they don't wanna be a press conference when this is.
So, that or the last link at the end of Doyle, right by the sign, yeah, we prefer not to have a lot of.
Yeah, no.
Hannah agrees on the other one.
I think that you'll probably get it more when you go to the hearing. Kathy?
I'm just gonna add, I know there's a gentleman here, he said he lives on Doyle. Um, I did take a right up the street. Um, is that where your sign is gonna be on the? At the end of Doyle, uh?
I, I think that's the trailhead and that's the recommendation from, from Walker. I do. No, I wouldn't put it up at the top, no, and I would put it down and put it down. Beyond the guardrail.
Yeah, the only thing I was gonna bring up is that people can spread the word. I know you don't, you think it's your own little enclave and you're comfortable with it. But people talk, people will say, hey, it's a nice walking trail and they're gonna use Doyle Avenue. And they're gonna park on both sides. And then the people that live there are, can be very happy. And I've already heard from my job part here, um, I've had a person call and complain about Venture Pond where they park on this one street and dump her trash. So, they're not happy. So, that possibility is still out there. And it doesn't go away. The other factors, you could have encampments approaching onto this property.
There, there was an encampment back there.
Well, those are things to, to think about. Um, nice idea, just, just concerns for the street and. Unsavvy characters in the property.
Well, let me, let me address. The homelessness thing. We're not gonna solve homelessness and people are gonna, people are gonna make their own way. And, and, you know, I walked on Delta Hills. It was an, well, an encampment there on the Chickapee side. And so, I mean, that stuff's gonna happen, but. If you improve the trail and like your best to get out and walk again. If we could figure out five and six and she could get beyond five and six, more people are walking. And the more people walk, the more likely they are.
To deter.
To deter folks.
And also to report the sewage problems of.
Right.
I'm going down there.
Right, so, I mean, it all gets better if we improve it and more people walk. The sewers were a big thing for, for a while. And that where you walk in that first. I mean, that's the worst. You can just smell it when they want to.
Yeah, we, we saw that last year. After that storm.
Yeah.
I mean, that's probably the city's, uh, issue about fixing them. Some of them need to be fixed. You know, do tops of them. Cover those up. I know that's just.
They, uh, opened up the end of Doyle, putting in an internet line underground. They went in there with machinery a few years back. And that opened it up a little bit to make it more of an entrance at the end of the well. And. I don't see a lot of traffic going there. I, I walk over that way quite a bit and go down in there and, and, uh. If you get the right group of people wanting to walk the trails. That's the whole idea, get them out in nature. People will look out for one another, they'll. Talk about. How nice it is. And that's the idea, I think. You know?
There were similar concerns with Delta Hills, when they formalized some of the trails. There was a couple of cars that came for a while and then it all dissipated. It went back to mostly neighborhood people. Using it. If you see a car in those streets now, it's very unusual. But there were similar concerns when they, when we did Delta Hills.
Well, it's a city road. You can park on a city road anytime you want. It's not owned by anybody that lives there. They wanna park. You, and you, you'll see the ones that are going in here and get used to the ones that are trying to enjoy it. And know, hey, that's so and so going to enjoy the park or, or walking trail, you know? And when they're done walking, they're out of there. So.
And it's only a mile long, so.
Yeah, so.
Okay, any other commissioners have questions? You're done. Uh, then a motion to close the. You're in on, uh, then a motion to close the public hearing, is it?
Move the public hearing. Also. Commissioner Collins?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Ryan?
Yes.
And Commissioner Bonjour?
Yes.
Okay, so while, while it's not on here. Uh, it would fit under all other matters, we could issue. Uh. A negative three determination.
Yes.
With, with the uh, proviso that. Your office be notified before construction of the bridge and things like that, and the, the grading that would take place. That be notified prior to that, so we could do that properly under item four and issue and have this. Uh, over and get it done right away.
Yeah.
Cause you have a date to, to file, right?
Yes.
So, if, if any of the commissioners would like to make a motion to issue a negative three determination with the provisions that. Have this notified before any, any of the grading work or the bridge building.
I would take that, I guess.
Second.
Commissioner Collins?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Ryan?
Yes.
And Commissioner Bonjour?
Yes.
And we'll have Adam Wright, a letter of support, because I think it's a great project. Um, and, and that's the whole reason why that part was put together, was to give these kinds of things to the neighbors. Uh, the one thing I wanted to say is that CPA funding, if we do get it, it will be. Uh, CPA, I, I mean, it'll be a Conservation Commission money, you all will manage it. And all the public funding will be done on conservation land. Anne and I will take care of our own property and any, any improvements on our own property. And part of CPA is to help develop conservation lands.
Yes.
You've got, it should have a good thing to put in your application there. Thank you. Any other questions? Any, any other items that, um, before, anyone wants to turn up and go to the mission? You're in on that motion to adjourn.
Need to adjourn.
You also, thank you.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Collins?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
And Commissioner Ryan?
Yes.
And Commissioner Bonjour? All right, thank you all, thank you, sir.